I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Pittman.
So she just...
Here. Pittman here, Slattery.
Here.
Sorry, here, Kulos.
Here.
Kulos, here, Johnson.
Here.
Johnson, here, Bransco. Bransco, absent, Bellato.
Here.
Bellato, here, Vieta.
Here.
Vieta, here, Rita.
Here.
Rita, here, Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here, Holly.
Here.
Holly, here, Fernwald.
Here.
Fernwald, here, Osling.
Here.
Osling, here, Thompson.
Here.
Thompson, here, Carr.
Here.
Carr, here, thirteen present.
Thank you very much. Next we have the presentation, general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the city council meeting for the date about October the tenth, twenty seventeen. Do I have a motion? Motion by Paulson and Johnson, second by Paulson and Thompson. Any questions? Roll call.
Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Slattery.
Obstain.
Obstain. Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Vieta.
Aye.
Vieta, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, twelve eyes and one nose, national.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna hold off on the motion for the minutes about October the twenty-fourth. I'm still be doing that, so I'm gonna jump down to the motion to approve a special meeting minutes for the date about October the twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen. I need a motion for that. Motion by Paulson and Pittman, for the second. Uh, Thompson, any questions? Roll call.
Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Vieta.
Aye.
Vieta, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Thirty-nine is your answer.
Thank you very much. For the next item, recognition, I'll come down to the podium and then gentlemen. So everybody knows, the next item on the agenda is recognizing the nine-one-one telecommunicators for their service to the city of Blue Island. And I'll hand it off to our director.
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, we switched from our Blue Island nine-one-one center to the Cook County Emergency nine-one-one dispatch center for police service and the Orland Fire Protection District Dispatch Center for fire response. I am proud to report that this transition went flawlessly and brings the city of Blue Island into the twenty-first century with regard to the latest state-of-the-art dispatch capabilities. As we all know, the world has turned into a dangerous place. All too often, we read about the recent mass shootings in a church in Texas or a concert in Las Vegas. I mention these kinds of incidents because these communities didn't know they were targeted until it happened, and that is why it is so important to be prepared. The federal government's Department of Homeland Security has been steadily pushing local governments to abandon small local dispatch centers by requiring them to upgrade their computer equipment to the latest state-of-the-art technology in an effort to properly respond to these egregious acts. Nine-one-one centers are being required to update their equipment to ensure the safety of our residents as well as our first responders. I am proud to report that after many months of research and preparation, that our police and fire departments, as well as our citizens, can now access the latest state-of-the-art technology. We did this while saving money and providing better paying jobs for those dispatchers who wish to move on to the Cook County Emergency nine-one-one center. And I might add, everybody who applied from here has been hired. This move was necessitated by the ever-increasing cost of constant advances in technology, but technology that keeps us safer. Now, we would be remiss if we did not spend a moment to recognize and thank the loyal and dedicated nine-one-one dispatches for our city. Knowing this change was coming, I am so proud to report that every one of them remained on duty to the very end, keeping us all safe. I would ask Chief Clinker, Deputy Chief Cornell, and Commander Sis to say a quick couple of words before we ask all of you to join us in showing our appreciation to the most dedicated group of professionals I have ever been privileged to work with, the Blue Island nine-one-one dispatchers.
Everyone knows I like to talk in front of the public, so first of all, I want to thank all these guys, they're awesome. Good luck in your careers and future. I'm gonna get my picture taken. So, they did a great job with what they had. The deal with this is the improvement in technology, thanks. Um, this, I just got me a little flustered. It's absolutely amazing. I mean, I have a computer in my car, the stuff that allows us to do, it's just amazing. The amount of dispatching time is quicker, and it's, once again, it's nothing against you guys, it's just they had more technology. And it's gonna make a huge difference in what we can do with the fire department. You check with these guys back here, they'll be more than happy to show you fire trucks and things and show you how stuff works. So, once again, thank you to you guys, you did a fantastic job. Good luck in where you're at, stay in touch. Everyone knows where I'm at, I'm leaving shortly too, so, alright? Thank you all.
I'd like to take the time to say thank you to the dispatchers. The doors opened here in June of nineteen ninety-four, and since then, many of you become family. We've all become family. It has been a great ride. We are looking forward to working with you in the future. Thank you. Thank you again for everything.
Commander Sis, December of two thousand fifteen, I was tasked with taking over the dispatch center, so I've been working with them from that point on. Many ups and downs that they could all tell you about in terms of staffing, and technology, and equipment, and training, policies. Our dispatchers worked really hard to improve this dispatch center. It came down to a matter of dollars and cents. It came down to an issue where our equipment had to be upgraded, as a requirement of the state of Illinois was gonna cost us to maintain the same level of service. It was gonna cost us a million dollars this year. In going to Cook County, we're saving five million dollars over the next five years. Okay? In addition to that, we're upgrading our technology to the top technology, and I'll talk about just a few real quick. But most importantly, our dispatchers were taken care of, and that was a big deal for us. No one was told, sorry, your job is gone. They were all given the opportunity to apply there, and as the director stated, everybody that applied and wished to go has a job, and they actually started today. So we're very happy with that. Just real quick on the technology. We now have Smart nine-one-one, and there will be information on the website very shortly at the next city council meeting. I'll actually have information in flyers to put out about that. But Smart nine-one-one, briefly, is a system where you can sign up, you can enter any information you want to. You can put photos of your children on there, you can put vehicle information for vehicles that you own, so that the officers on duty know what vehicles should be around your house. God forbid we have a lost child, the first thing we as officers look for is a picture of that child. Sometimes it takes a while to obtain that. We'll instantaneously have that. If that information is in Smart nine-one-one, the dispatcher can actually send it to our officer's terminal. So that's just a brief look at that. You'll also be able to text to nine-one-one. That's supposed to be in effect as of November twentieth. We'll update you on the website when that occurs, but very shortly, you'll be able to text to nine-one-one, send photos to nine-one-one, and it goes on and on. The technology for our officers has increased as well. So it's a great thing for our city, and it's a great thing all around. But most importantly tonight, we want to honor our dispatchers. This group that we have here, our concern, when we realized, okay, this has to happen for the good of our taxpayers and our residents and our officers, it has to happen, our concern was, how do we maintain our dispatch center until that time? How do we maintain the level of service for our citizens? Well, thanks to these dispatchers, I can assure you, you didn't notice any difference in service. They all stayed till the very end. They put in extra effort. Our concern was whether the effort would be there, they went above and beyond to the very end. So you should truly be proud of our dispatchers and thank them personally if you get a chance. But at this point in time, we're gonna, the mayor's gonna help me, we're gonna issue some citations.
If I may, let me just add a little thing. Please, Mayor, let me come up here. I'm gonna come up really close and personal to all of you. From, it's been an alderman elected back in nineteen ninety-one. You guys came on board three years later, nineteen ninety-four. Back then, it was a big thing. Today, it is still a big thing. Without you, the men in blue, the men in red, and myself, depend a lot on you and the safety and the information that you receive. Think about all the years that you've worked here and all the calls that you received. It's not just one, twenty, a hundred thousands upon thousands upon thousands of telephone calls. Some could have been prank phone calls, right? Some were legitimate. Some were dire. Some had even been family. Not only from this community, from surrounding communities. I mean, you touched everyone. I remember, I would come and visit the majority of you guys, different shifts, catch you guys off-guard a bit, but it was good. I was seeing the job that you were doing, I was witnessing with my own eyes how stressful your job is, okay? Not just because I have the gray hair, but I mean, you guys really have the stressful. It takes a particular, very strong individual to do the job that you guys do. And it was a very difficult decision, as the mayor, to finally say, you know what? We have to go this route. But again, I'm happy for the ones that did apply, who do have their new jobs, they're making more money, I think, right? New equipment, but this will always be your home. You'll always remember, this is where you started and where you ended. One phase in your life as telecommunicators. Again, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart personally, and as the mayor of the city of Blue Island, for your service, your dedication to the very end, to the city of Blue Island. Thank you very much, and I... (applause) Glad to just wanna read this, and each one of them will receive this certificate. It says, "Certificate of Appreciation. In honor of your outstanding performance and dedication, we gladly present this certificate for your performance and excellence in emergency telecommunications. Awarded this fourth day of November two thousand seventeen." The first one, first certificate is awarded to Yami El Serna. Congratulations. And again, thank you for your dedication. Yami is our last remaining part-time dispatcher, but she's going full-time to the county, so she's moving forward with this career. Let's give that young lady a round of applause. Next, Jamie Gonzalez. Jamie. And it's helped with the transitions. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Jamie. Congratulations again. We'll turn around, we'll take a photo. Gabe has been our administrative assistant for the last year. And he made sure they got paid, so they all love Gabe. Really, I just get to clap for him. It's gonna go to someone that has been here a very long time, has been a supervisor here a very long time, ran this dispatcher for several years by himself. He's poured his heart and soul into this place, and, as Jim comes up, I'm gonna show something. We consider this the highest honor for a dispatcher to receive the golden headset. Each one of our dispatchers will receive one of these. It was too much to bring all of them here, but after this, they will receive them. I'm gonna give Jim his now. Jim, if you can come up. This is the happiest and most probably person I've ever met anywhere. She's a pleasure to work with. I'm sure they've been here quite a long time. The next three, I'm gonna name and have been here a super long time, close to the level with Jim. And these three, I consider the rack. They were always called the eight team by our agencies around, and they did our training, they went above and beyond on a regular basis, so I'd really want to thank you three for the support you gave me when I came over to run the nine-one-one center. First one is Christina Nevett. Again, congratulations to all the telecommunicators for your service, your dedicated service to the city of Blue Island. You would be missed, but thank you very much. You guys be welcome. My bear's gonna be famous, man. I'll move on to public comment again. Limited to three minutes. Item there on the agenda, if not, we'll refer to departments or whatever you need to bring up. Open up the public comment. Public first. Go ahead. Who needs your name and address?
Tom Logan, Executive Director of the Blue Island Park District. I'll give the one-twenty, uh, one-twenty oh four island is the park that I'm in, so it's in the capacity that I'm here in. I'll just use my phone, but I don't take notes out these days. It's occurred to me, as I looked at my calendar, that it's been about a year since I took the position as Executive Director of the Park District. And it was about a year ago that I first came to this council to introduce myself, so I just wanted to kinda stop back in and give a few highlights and put a few things on your radar from the Park District standpoint. It has been a very eventful year, it's been a very busy year at the Park District. Just a few highlights, we had our highest day camp attendance ever. We had our largest barbecue on the hill event ever, thanks in large part to a lot of help and cooperation with the city. We've done some very exciting projects in the city over the past, especially over the past six weeks, it's been extremely busy. If you live around Perillo Park, you may have noticed, there's a new Perillo Park. Came up over about a three-day period with the help of a lot of folks in the community and a grant from Target. It looks great, if you haven't seen it yet, so I've got a few, a little bit more landscaping to do there, but by and large, the new playground and everything, the equipment, it looks fantastic. Specifically, I want to thank Bethel Panacausal Church. I know Nancy Meddles in the audience, we would not have been able to do that without the cooperation with the city, community groups, churches, the park. It was a great example of that, and I was proud to be a part of it. Upgrades, if you live around City Corral, you may have noticed, we've done a lot in that park as well recently. That was with the help of some financial support from Blue Cross for Shield. We were able to replace a number of things there that needed replacing, including putting in a brand-new soccer field there with new nets, so we're pretty happy with that. We're also working right now on opening a new soccer field near Perillo Park, which will provide a proper soccer field for the kids that were playing in there. Cause a lot of problems, might have even currently been divided here in this council. Should be ready by next spring with that. That's a partnership with NWRD and the city as well, so. And also with those projects, we were able to have some leftover materials, et cetera, some of which we were able to put new mulch over at the rec center playground at no cost to the city. So we're trying to honor that partnership. And in that, you know, to just wrap up my little presentation here, we are still engaged in a partnership between the city and the rec center, the city and the Park District over the rec center. I don't know if you've been in the rec center as of late, but it has been packed, pretty much wall-to-wall in calendar with really excellent programs, open gyms, soccer, volleyball, basketball. I think we're getting a lot of really good use out of it, and I'm just very happy to be part of that partnership. And if you haven't been over there, check out some of the stuff going on there, both during the week and the weekends. Be pretty, be pretty hard-pressed not to find active groups there, I think it looks great. One last thing, we're gonna be doing the Santa House again this year. I know last year, some, we're not gonna be doing as many stops, the new program book is coming out this week. We'll have copies dropped out here at the city, I'll have all the dates, including that. Please contact me directly or the Park District if any of the aldermen would like to participate in staffing the Santa House. I hope some of the kids who have staffing in the Santa House helping with the Santa House or something.
Yes, 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 yes.
Alright. And with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions if you have any other than that. I just wanted to make sure, kinda, it's been a year since I started, wanted to give you on behalf of the board, an update, and to say, thank you to the city for all of your cooperation and help, and we continue to look forward to delivering really good parks and rec for the city. And as always, as soon as you shoot up my card, I'll be happy to give you one after this. It's got my direct line on there, go ahead and say your call, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I got a question from here.
Yes, go ahead.
I wanted to talk to him about the Blue, the Blue Cap School with the Special Olympics that's been utilizing the recreation center since the beginning, that has been open and has been moved. A lot of things been done to make that a Special Olympics site. And they are, Blue Cap School is our own kids.
Yeah, great, great. So, just real quick, and I'd be happy to talk more offline to get out of the way for other folks. The bottom line was, we just, we had a conflict. We had a soccer program running in there, and we had a communications mishap, is what it boiled down to. So what I did is, I worked with Blue Cap, I've been in pretty constant communication with the coach and the administrators of Blue Cap. We worked with District one-thirty to find them some additional gym space at veterans, and it wasn't the perfect solution, but, you know, for what it's worth, Blue Cap does have a gym to work with, they seem to be happy with it. It wasn't ideal, we did have a conflict, there was, you know, the soccer program that was in there had already been pretty much sold and established, so there was a little bit of a growing pain, I would call that, considering the amount of programming we've started there over the past year. You know, it's gonna, it was something to learn from in terms of your better communication moving forward, but that's what happened there.
Yeah, can I talk there? Because they are special, specials of the city of Blue Island, that they would have precedence over it since they were there first, before soccer.
And we can, you know, I would just say that we had to make a judgment call, I would say, I had to make a judgment call about what program was more able to essentially move, and it was between, you know, it was, so that's why we went and got additional gym space for them, but it was going to be, essentially, this judgment call is gonna be harder to move soccer, given the size of the soccer program, which has grown considerably, and is taking advantage of it by number of rural families as well. So, like I said, it wasn't perfect, it wasn't ideal, but we made sure that we got them necessary gym space, and we remain in constant communication with Blue Cap. We value our partnership with Blue Cap greatly, and we will continue to work with them moving forward.
Okay. I'm the president of Blue Island Untouchables as well. Next year will be sixty years for us to celebrate. We're the oldest Metro League team in the south suburbs, so next year will be sixty years, and out of my twenty-one years being involved with the Untouchables, it's the worst I ever seen that field. Barbecue on the hill, we was playing on real bombs. I got pictures of my guys raking them up in the infield, the other team was complaining more or less about it, but I don't even wanna hear about what the other team was complaining about, because they never made it to the end zone. But, what I'm saying is, is that with this team and what this program has done, not only for individuals that participated in it, but for the city to bring in their first national championship, I think next year, that that field should be more open to the players, as well as looking a lot better since it's the sixtieth year anniversary.
I agree, I will tell you, the, that field is very high on the priority list of capital improvements moving forward, so I hope to have a little bit more information in the weeks to come, with this winner, we're taking a very serious look. I agree with you. It's from the day I started, it's one of the first things I noticed, my office overlooks it. It's a daily reminder that it needs to be repaired, so it's definitely high on my radar, it's higher than the three R's well. Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much. Name and address.
My name is Joseph Alba, I live at one-two-eight oh eight South Maple Avenue in Blue Island. I'm kinda here preemptively. I wanna thank the members of the council and the mayor for voting on the Blue Island Firefighter Club Museum and Education Center tonight. If you don't mind, I'd like to pass this, it's just a concept drawing that I'd like to pass around to the aldermen, so you can get a basic idea. I'll be in the back looking after it. This whole thing came to fruition back in March or April. Chief Clinker called me, and he told me that I needed to move my fire truck out of the city garage. And I was like, Chief Clinker, that I would love to do that, but it's not really my fire truck, it belongs to the city. And then it's like, the brakes got slammed on, and everything came to a screeching halt. And I heard about the house that was coming down by the post office, and I had a lot of time driving around in my semi, not to do anything but think, and I came up with the idea. So I told Jim about it, I says, hey, why don't we build a museum over there for old best? And Jim talked to a few people, and all of a sudden, it started. I went to the Historical Society and asked them, because of their five oh one C-three status, if they would be a partner in this, so that we could raise money through them and make it tax-deductible. They said, oh, that'd be great, but we don't wanna own it. I said, no, the city will own it, and have it after it's done. Just so everybody understands, we're gonna raise the funds to build the building. It'll be a city building, but the city is not gonna do spending, I won't say they won't spend any money, but the bulk of the money is gonna be gone through fundraising, whether it's endowments, in-kind contributions, a GoFundMe page, and that kind of thing. Our goal is to have the museum open in the beginning, one Saturday a month, hold fire prevention classes there for kids, have it open during fire prevention week every day, all on a volunteer basis, so it's not gonna be payroll costs or anything like that. There's been a lot of support for it, and I just wanted to offer it out there, maybe aldermen have any questions or anything, I'll answer them as best I can. I'm just glad to see it going forward.
We'll take this opportunity, since he's up, is there any questions? Any concerns? Nope?
Okay. I have one... Okay, I have one more question now.
Go ahead.
Leaves.
Yes.
I'm fortunate enough to live in one of the parts of Blue Island where the leaves stay on the trees forever.
It's on the first cross, right?
No, no, they're still hanging up there, yes. I'll be raking leaves on Christmas Eve, because they don't lose that. The deadline for the leaf pickup is December 1st. Is that going to be extended, or is there going to be something?
Well, probably have to extend it.
Between my house and my sister's house, we bagged 170 bags of leaves last year, and I have, I have a machine that chops them up, so it's, it's a big issue at my house, and I love it, I love the trees on there, but, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you for your service and dedication.
I love, oh, I should say, I was a paid-on-call firefighter here for over 30 years, I'm retired now, that's, was my first feeling as a old best.
Anyone else?
I'll have this in the back, if anybody from the public wants to take a look at it.
Name and address. Annette Alexander, 2804 141st Street. I just had a question regarding the minutes from October 24th meeting. I don't get to come to the meetings, but I do read the meeting, the minutes online. On that, there was a removal of the city attorney, and I just wanted clarification as to what happened with that.
Well, here's the thing, we're going to review it, I'm reviewing the minutes, so I'd rather not comment on that right now.
Okay.
Until we review the tapes.
So you're not approving that, those minutes?
No, no. That's why I postponed it.
Has the removal been approved?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. What happened?
Well, you can look at the tape. It was done already.
It was done already?
Yes, correct.
On the tape is the reason for the removal on there?
Oh yeah, everything was spelled out.
Okay, and the new attorney was the previous city attorney?
No, it's a law firm.
It's a new attorney, never worked with city of Blue Island before?
He worked for fire, yeah, but now he works for a law firm.
I'm sorry?
He works for a law firm, Ogleson East Street.
Okay, and that's a new attorney for the city of Blue Island?
Firm, law firm.
The new attorney firm for city of Blue Island?
Correct.
And that's new, they never worked for us before?
Just for a very short period of time.
Okay, and the reason they were removed, the end?
Counsel.
Just counsel, for a particular reason?
Correct.
So I can watch the tape, but that one is what?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Bush.
Oh, David is the one.
How are you?
Great. I've got a question concerning the businesses of Blue Island.
Yes.
Like I, you know, it's the holidays, whatever, I'm not no one's victim ever, but I just have a question. How does Blue Island, like, like one store, like, for example, Family Dollar, like, they have like one light on the side, Mayor Barcas, you know, not the society, they have the two city lights, so I'm just concerned, how do you all get more lights out there, especially all these also? Because I've had, you know, day ten, you know, a guy runs around, and it's kind of weird, but you know, Blue Island's finest took care of that one weekend, he was harassing people from different stores, so how do you all go about putting more lights out, like, for all of these?
Let's put this, so people know, the lights that are on the wooden poles, those are ComEd, ComEd lights, and then the other ones are cities' lights. If there's a petition, or there needs to be one, there's a special form, and then we, for example, we've got the petition ComEd to see if it's eligible or feasible, and again, whether it's going to be our cost or their cost.
All right, and, all right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Name and address.
I'm Joseph Martin, in the beautiful Freddy's Point, in 13201 South Asman, in Blue Island.
Yes.
I want to make a couple statements. You said, "A broken city don't progress, and I promise us to build a better Blue Island." What we are now, the eyes and conscience upon us, we have strong leaders, we let leaders, like our Mayor Barcas, Randy I. City Clerk, and Mr. Chairman, I. City Treasurer. They make hard decisions, and sometimes we don't like it, they have no choice. We like, I should look like a chain, the city is like a chain, we're working together with stronger, we're only as strong as our weakest link. Most people like to point out problems, what we like to do is look at progress, and when I say progress, as we drive throughout IC, we see progress, we see research, we see the Davis Beach Bridge, we look down the bridge, we see the Jalen Bridge, we see progress. All the aldermen work very hard to build a better Blue Island. I'd say it's not for the money, the little money they get. Blue Island, the eyes and conscience on us. As far as I know, we're one of the top seven progressive cities in the nation. Let's stay together, work together, and stay strong. We are only as strong as the weakest link. This is our chain. Let's work together and build a better Blue Island. Thank you.
Carol DePace Green, 2731 Orchard Street, Blue Island. Tonight on the agenda, number seven is settlement, is that going to move forward?
The city attorney information, yes.
Yeah, I think a lot of people are confused about that particular lawsuit, and there was a question that even I had with respect to how much the Blue Island taxpayers are going to pay for that lawsuit. Are we going to be spending any money, or are we just going to sign off?
We're spending money. Again, it was before council arrived, it was with other council, when that was in executive session.
Okay, I had a feeling it was going to end up costing us money. And then item number eight, that would be the 4.9 tax increase for the taxpayers of Blue Island. I've talked a lot about how the taxpayers in Blue Island cannot afford all these tax and fee increases. It is cutting working family food budgets, it's cutting into the monies that they have. I don't know anyone who received a 4.9 salary increase. We're looking at increasing the tax levy, we're looking at increasing water rates and sewer rates. The people who live here cannot afford the tax levy increase and a water rate and sewer rate fee increase. You're asking too much for the regular working families of Blue Island. So I really need you to take that into sincere consideration, not everyone has a six-figure job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? We can have the report. Report to city officials, I have no mayor's announcements, city clerk, any business?
No business, sir.
Uh, any bits?
No business.
City treasurer?
Yes, Your Honor, recitation statement, thank statement, on the October 31st, 2017, with authority, you, the motion, accept.
The motion, we have a motion by Alderman Osling, and a second by Alderman Farinwall. Any questions? Roll call.
Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwall.
Aye.
Farinwall, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
No.
Thompson, no. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Eleven ayes today.
Thank you very much. No further information at this point. To the city attorney?
Miss Members of the council, before you, there is a motion to approve the settlement agreement, general release, and covenant not to sue in the lawsuit Harris versus Nelson Caddy McPark, 2014 L. 9643, and to authorize the mayor to sign the settlement agreement and direct payment to be made in accordance with the agreement. The agreement was presented to you as part of your council packet. I was not part of the process, but I was asked to present this to you for your consideration this evening, I understand the details have been discussed with you previously.
Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Holly. Any questions? Roll call.
Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwall.
Aye.
Farinwall, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anything else? That's all I have, thank you. Community development committee?
Yes, Your Honor, the community development committee met on Thursday, November 2nd, in the city council chambers, a meeting was called to order at 7:04. Present were Alderman Holly, Bellato, Frosto, Osling, and Thompson, absent were Alderman Johnson and Rita. Also present were Commander Slattery, Angel Infante, and Mike Holly. There was no public comment, notable business under new business, the following news signs were listed. The building and planning report for October 2017 was reviewed, revenues for the month of October were $65,047.25. Total revenue to date for 2017 is $557,314.41. There were 283 residential inspections, 216 housing court summons issued. Total housing court fines issued in September was $61,600. A report of properties that are currently not approved for occupancy and properties that currently are posted with a stop work order were also reviewed. Fines were considered to, for T-Mobile antennas to be put on Metro South Dr. Pilvoni and at 2310 York Street. They have applied for zoning relief and special use permit, decided would need to go through the zoning board appeals, who would then issue a findings effect and make a recommendation. The committee did not have a problem with the plans, and it was moved by Alderman Osling and Alderman Thompson to send the project to ZBA, and if they approve it, it can go directly to city council for approval. Three properties were considered for giving historic landmark designation, 2547 Walnut Street, 12846 Maple Avenue, and 12914 Town Street. Applications were reviewed, it was moved by Alderman Osling and second by Alderman Thompson to recommend judiciary draw up historic landmark designation ordinances for all three properties, all were in favor. Under Business District, the funds received in 2017 through October is $547,860.40. Expenditures for 2017 from the fund are $142,605.15. The balance of the Justice Development District fund was $649,565.66 at the end of October. 10% of the funds that were received are allocated to the beside grant program, and at this time, the balance is $101,285.60. Under alderman concerns, questions were asked about the liquor committees, and specifically about Petton Paul's location and bread and bottle. Alderman Holly said he would talk to the mayor, Blue Island seafood is highly recommended by those who have eaten there, as a good New restaurants, and have very equally good things about the Spanish restaurant at New and Western as well, so if you haven't tried them, go out and try them. They need, and they're also, they're also in need of a liquor license. Alderman Frosto asked about following up with businesses on Old Western, did you not get their garbage cans off of Old Western in the allotted time following garbage day? Mr. Infante said he would check into that. Alderman Bellato asked about ordinance for satellite dishes to not be visible from the street in Blue Island. There being no further business, it was moved by Alderman Osling and second by Alderman Thompson to adjourn, motion passed, and the meeting was adjourned at 7:39 PM. Our next meeting is actually this Thursday, November 16th, at 6:00 PM here in the city council chambers, and then our following meeting is on Thursday, December 7th, at 7:00 PM here in city council chambers.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Finance committee?
Finance committee, much on November 7th, 2017, 7:05. Members present, Alderman Holly, Alderman Frosto, Alderman Farinwall, Alderman Thompson, and Alderman Osling, absent, Alderman Vieira. Also present, Deputy Finance Director Lori Brown, Treasurer Carmen Bellato, Bob Mampai, Carol DePace Green, and Commander Jackson Sager. Under public comment, Carol DePace Green asked about payroll coming out of the water fund, and Bob Mampai asked if this current audit was for 2016. Motion for approval of payroll for October 20th, 2017, in the amount of $387,332.55.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second? By Alderman Holly. Any questions? Roll call.
Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwall.
Aye.
Farinwall, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
A motion for approval of payroll for November 3rd, 2017, in the amount of $560,432.67.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second? Alderman Farinwall, any questions?
Yes. Sir, thank you, Your Honor. This is my question to Mr. Horvath. Mr. Horvath, in the memo you sent on Friday, this is asking us to affirm that the mayor, the treasurer, and the clerk paid $1,000, like, they do $1,000 hours of service to receive the I.R.F. pension? I'm just confused on what, what we're affirming.
Actually, the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund required municipalities to pass a resolution, uh, before September 1st, indicating which officials in their municipality can participate in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, provided they meet the requirement in this particular municipality of 1,000 hours. There are three officials, three elected officials in your city that have the ability to meet that requirement, and that's why the resolution is being presented. Apparently, it had not been presented on September 1st. City Clerk Pfizer, Pfizer asked me to have it prepared, I contacted IMRF, they told me the officials that would, would qualify, provided they meet the requirements, and so that is what the resolution is coming to.
No.
Johnson, no. Bellato.
No.
Bellato, no. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Donahue.
No.
Donahue, no. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwall.
Aye.
Farinwall, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Vieira, aye.
Motion carries.
A motion for a resolution relating to participation by elected officials in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund.
You have a motion. Do you have a second? Alderman Farinwall?
Got a question.
Yes.
Sir, thank you, Your Honor. Um, this my question to Mr. Horvath. Mr. Horvath, in the memo you sent on Friday, this is asking us to affirm that the mayor, the treasurer, and the clerk paid a thousand, like, they do a thousand hours of service to receive the eye of recognition. I'm just confused on what, what we're affirming.
Actually, the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund required municipalities to pass a resolution, uh, before September first, indicating which officials in their municipality can participate in the Illinois Municipal, uh, Retirement Fund, provided they meet the requirement in this particular municipality, one thousand hours. There are three officials, three elected officials in your city that have the ability to meet that requirement, and that's why the resolution is being presented. Apparently, it had not been presented on September first. City Clerk Heiser, Heiser asked me to have it prepared. I contacted IMRF. They told me the officials that would, would qualify provided they meet the requirements, and so that is what the resolution is telling me.
Thank you for the explanation. Now, with a thousand hours, do they have to provide city council with anything in writing, saying that they, they met a thousand hours of work, like a statement or, or anything? Just because I didn't see anything in the packets. I'm just confused or concerned that there's nothing to actually affirm that they're meeting the thousand hours.
I was able to obtain from the IR, IMRF, their, their memorandum that they submitted to the authorized agent for the city, uh, Special Memorandum three thirty-seven. That lays out the requirements that must be met. I can read briefly from that, because I don't pretend to be an expert on what the IMRF requires. But it just says the new board rules, the IMRF Board Trustee rules, require governing bodies of units of government with elected positions participating in IMRF to pass new resolutions reaffirming that physicians meet the IMRF hourly standard, either six hundred or one thousand hours per year. Hours spent at meetings, preparing for meetings in the office, and actually conferring with constituents are counted as performance of duty and may be included in the IMRF hourly standard. Hours spent on call or otherwise informally available to constituents do not count as performance of duty and should not be included in the IM, IMRF hourly standard. So those are the types of things that IMRF looks to, to determine, uh, right? Yes, looks to determine if the officials haven't done what they're supposed to. It's up to the officials to keep a log of the time that they spend.
So they don't have to provide anything to the city or IMRF certified, they have a thousand hours?
Do they have to? I, I don't know the answer to that question.
I, I don't know them requirement. If I just, on this order, it says that the physician normally required. That's, that's what you're, and historically, those just done through HR or, I mean, whatever. This is a new thing for IMRF. That's what we've always seen before. Every two years, this will be up front before the council.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you, Mr. Horvath. Thank you, Mayor.
There's no problem. Any other questions? Matt, we need a motion for this. Yes, we need a motion.
Motion. I need motion.
We want a second. We want a motion, a second. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye. Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
No.
Donahue, no. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwall.
Aye.
Farinwall, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Eleven ayes to me.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I would like to thank Alderman Kulos and Alderman Frosto for remaining on council floor at the last city council meeting. If they would have walked out as the other Aldermen did, leaving Alderman Ossling, Thompson, Johnson, Vieira, Holly, and Farinwall, we would not have had a quorum to accept the CDBG grant in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for Longwood Drive. This grant was time sensitive and needed to be passed that length. Thank you, Alderman. No further. No further business. The meeting was adjourned at seven twenty. Our next meeting is November twenty-first, seven P.M. East Adams.
Thank you very much. Alderman Tom, State Committee?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Blue Island and the Illinois Historical Society, but put in front of the motion.
You have a motion. Do you have a second? Alderman Donahue. Any questions?
Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwall.
Aye.
Farinwall, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson. Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and I do have a couple of announcements regarding, um, the police department.
Go ahead.
Director Rita mentioned tonight that Deputy Chief Cornell has been appointed to the South Suburban Emergency Response Team Board, so we'd like to congratulate him on that. Also, Corporal LaSalle King was inducted into the Wall of Honor at Veterans Memorial School for his service, um, in the Army. I think they all left, but I'd like to thank all the people from the nine-one-one center again. Um, December the second will be Phila Cruiser with the Police Department and Angels Clutch, and that will be held out in front of the Police Department. And our next meeting will be December the twelfth, at six o'clock here in the East Adams.
Thank you. Municipal Services Committee?
Uh, no report, Your Honor. Our next meeting is November twenty-eighth at six P.M. in East Adams.
Thank you. Judiciary Committee?
Uh, no report, Your Honor. Our next meeting is this Monday, November twenty, at six P.M. at the East Adams.
Any other announcements or comments? Go ahead, Alderman.
Thank you, uh, Your Honor. I just wanted to again thank all the nine-one-one dispatchers for their dedication and hard work they provided to the city for their time there here. Um, also want to thank Commander Sisk, Deputy Chief Cornell, and Director Rita. They, I know they put in a ton of work to make sure this thing went smoothly, um, and there was no glitches or problems. So thank you again, Director Rita, Deputy Chief Cornell, and Commander Sisk. Thank you.
What is the status? Is, has there been any communication between the city and the Walgreens property?
There has, and we sent them, uh, we refer over to our city attorney.
Yes, Alderman. Uh, on November third, uh, we sent a request to Mr. Durnus, who was the gentleman that was before you at the last meeting, requesting five items from him to be presented so that the city could then, these were the matters that Mr. Richlicky indicated in his comments to the council were important in order for the city to then consider whether to proceed with his request, where incentives are there. And since that time, we've received one of the items, a phase one environmental review that was performed at the request apparently of the current owner of the property. None of the other items have been presented. I did talk with the gentleman, uh, on Friday of last week, who indicated that he was a broker in the transaction, and that they would be submitting, indicated that the other four items were not difficult items to address, and that they would be submitting them to myself and Mr. Richlicky for review. As of now, they have not presented any, any of those items. The items we asked for were the, some evidence of, of Mr. Durnus's ability to control the property, meaning either a contract or some form of ownership document. A banking commitment to address what he indicated were his intentions concerning financing. A general contractor's statement to show what the cost estimates for the project would be, so that basically Kane McKenna and Mr. Richlicky could then determine what costs might be eligible for any kind of incentive agreement. And then, at least a ten to twelve-year proposed lease from a grocer or grocer operator to show that they were going to actually be dealing with a grocer in terms of when they completed the development. Those are four. And then the last one was a phase one environmental, which is anything you can't present.
Is that good help? Thank you. You're welcome. Any other comments? Alderman and council?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, you guys are unsatisfied with Chicago Bears. Uh, Blue Island, a touchable, have three levels that made it to the Super Bowl Saturday at Evergreen Park House. First time since nineteen eighty.
And I have, we have the trophy upstairs.
Um, I would just like to thank everybody who came to the, our final fundraiser for the Christmas parade. Uh, now it's time to full speed ahead for the, uh, actual parade itself, which is on December second. There's a lot of activities that are free and family-friendly. Um, there'll be rides for the kids, uh, and there'll be a Kringle mart that'll be under the tents at, in the parking lot at High and Western. And additionally, the library will be having Christmas movies from one to four in the afternoon on Saturday. Those are also free. And there are business open houses following the parade, and Free Pictures with Santa in, in that same lot, uh, thanks to the Park District and the Santa House. Um, and then, uh, the parade itself kicks off at five-thirty on Union and Western. It will head south on Western Avenue. It'll, uh, loop around, uh, at Veterans Triangle and come back north on Gregory and end up at Union Street again. So you can watch it in two places, or, uh, be a lot less crowded on Gregory. So head on over there and watch it there instead of between York and New Street. So if anybody would like to volunteer to help, uh, with some of the, uh, parade watchers and trying to keep them back a little bit, I think that would be helpful as well. Uh, or to help with lineup or in other ways at the Christmas parade, please email me at believeinblueisland@gmail.com, and I can, uh, sign you up for the list. If you would like to be in the parade, I have, uh, entry forms up here. I have a few entry forms up here, so please come and see me and, uh, and light up a car, truck, or float, and you part of the parade.
Thank you. And those entry forms are available online, too.
Yes, they're available online and at City Clerk's office. Very cool. Alderman, any comments? Yep.
Yes, I also, uh, would like to personally thank all the nine-one-one operators for their dedication and service. And also, uh, Rita Sisk and Chief Clinker. Thank you for all the help that you put in to help get the, um, contract going. Um, I also wanted to welcome all the Eisenhower students that are here. It's great to see your smiling faces.
Yes, Your Honor. I was wondering, with only sixteen days left in November, and Chief Clinker is leaving us on November thirtieth, have we made any progress in finding a new buyer?
We have received resumes, and in the next couple weeks, we'll be interviewing those candidates. I'll say, back starting Monday. Any other comments? Matt, I'm gonna relay something personal. Uh, twenty-some years ago, Blue Island supported my family regarding a niece called, her name was Emily Inman. This coming Thursday, we need your, I need your prayers. My family needs your prayers. She's going under, under the knife, as they say, uh, brain surgery. She wasn't supposed to make it past ten years of age. She's twenty-eight now. She's married. My, my cousin died, my close cousin died, Patricia Vaston Inman, as a result of preparing to donate her bone marrow for her own daughter. So she never made it. She died as a mannerism. So Emily is really the last connection that we have. It's a very serious, serious, um, operation, life and death, at Northwestern this coming Thursday. So keep her in your prayers, and my family in your prayers. Motion for adjournment? Go ahead with Pittman. Second, all of you. All in favor?
Aye.